The following program is brought to you by the League of Women Voters, Oakland area. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan organization established to encourage citizen participation in government. It never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. The statements and opinions of the candidates are presented in the interest of public service, and in no way are to be construed as endorsement thereof by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters takes no responsibility for any of the views or facts stated by the candidates.
Welcome to this virtual interview for the candidates who have filed for city council for the city of Sylvan Lake on the ballot for the November 3 election. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters Oakland Area under their guidelines for forums. Tonight's virtual forum, September 15, 2020, is being recorded for broadcast on the city's website and also available on the League of Women Voters website at wwwmy.lwva.org/michigan/okland-area. On the ballot are six candidates. You must vote for not more than two for a four-year term. The candidates are Luke Cassar, Graham Cousins, James L. Calper, Aaron Lorenz, Philip Ross, and Sally Segal. I am Jerry Burton, a member of the League of Women Voters and not a resident of Sylvan Lake. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, national, nonpartisan organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. However, we never endorse or support any candidate or political party. We are directly involved in shaping important issues and keep our community strong. As a League of Women Voters member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this that has great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you're interested in learning about how you can make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some of the League's information and visit our website The League of Women Voters did not endorse any candidate or political party. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, and the League takes no responsibility. As moderator, I reserve the right to enforce the guidelines set by the League. We ask the candidates to address only their views regarding the office they are seeking and not refer to or interrupt their opponents. The candidates will be answering questions submitted online by residents of Sylvan Lake. The format for all candidates will be given one-minute opening statement, one minute for closing statement, and will have one minute to answer each question unless time is extended by the moderator. All candidates will have equal time to answer each question. We will indicate when the candidates have 15 seconds and when to stop. We will begin our candidate forum with a one-minute opening statement by the candidates, and then the candidate will have one minute to answer each question. We will start with Mr. Cousins.
My name is Graham Cousins. My family history in Sylvan Lake goes back nearly 70 years, and we're proud to carry on that tradition. After building a successful career in some of the finest cities in our country, my wife and I returned to Sylvan Lake to raise our family and contribute to our community. I've served faithfully on the Planning Commission for six years, and in those years, I've worked diligently and fairly to represent all citizens of Sylvan Lake and to revitalize the Planning Commission into the body the citizens deserve. I've led our transformation into an active body, anticipating and addressing our most pressing issues and asking for your partnership at every turn. Together, we've tackled many important issues culminating in our current undertaking, a reworking of the master plan to be developed in collaboration with the community and which will guide our growth over the next 10 critical years. If elected to city council, you can expect my continued fair, dedicated, and faithful service to all residents of Sylvan Lake.
Thank you. And the first question will be, what do you perceive is the responsibility of the city council in relation to decisions and recommendations of the Planning Commission and the ZBA?
Well, the Planning Commission is an advisory board charged with making recommendations as to ordinances and rules governing the subdivision and use of land. City council's role is not to rubber stamp every recommendation they receive. They have an obligation to engage the public and thoroughly review all recommendations before adopting. City council also plays a critical role in enabling the vision articulated in the master plan in matters of capital expenditures and other measures required to help bring that plan to life. The zoning board of appeals is somewhat different, as their focus is to interpret and advise as to ordinances and direction given by city council and planning commission. That board exists to review, affirm, modify, or perhaps reverse direction given by city council and planning commission, and the role of city council becomes a matter of supporting their decisions and creating clarifying language or other supporting content to ensure that ordinances are interpreted properly moving forward.
Thank you. The next question, what are your comments regarding police services and the management of the budget to support those services?
Well, I'm a proud supporter of John Martin, Police Chief Bassett, and our fine officers. They are friends to everyone in our community, and they work tirelessly to ensure our sense of peace and happiness. With regard to budget, Chief Bassett will work with our city manager to establish a budget for the forthcoming year to be included in the annual budget to be reviewed and discussed in a public hearing before city council prior to adoption. City council can then assist with procurement of equipment and other resources in a manner that is fiscally responsible. We want to help negotiate the best pricing we can for the city. I believe that we need to ensure our police department has everything they need to serve and protect the residents. I would like for us to prioritize reducing the threat of speeding through our neighborhood. I'll defer to the police chief as to exactly what he needs to make that happen from a budgetary and resource standpoint, and I intend to support his plan.
Thank you. Besides the current pandemic, why do you think there are so many commercial vacancies along Orchard Lake Road?
Well, while all indicators from our planning commission and team of advisors is that our area can support a significant increase in businesses, we have homework to do to determine the root cause of these vacancies. I believe the cause is rooted in a number of areas. Number one, the general downturn of brick-and-mortar businesses as impacted by big-box stores and online retailers. Number two, many of these properties require an influx of cash to fund improvements, and under current economic conditions, cash is in short supply. Number three, we as a city do not currently have a small business incentive or grant program in place, like other communities who've been able to attract new businesses. And finally, there exists a perception that it is an arduous task to open a small business in our community as compared to surrounding communities. Well, I intend to make all of these issues a top priority in city council so that we can bring the Orchard Lake corridor back to life in accordance with our new master plan.
Thank you. And the fourth question, what are your feelings about strict enforcement of existing ordinances, specifically trucks, trailers, and equipment stored on private property? Now, I made a note when I got this question because the person who asked it did not indicate whether they meant private or residential.
Well, my feelings on this issue apply to all ordinances. In our community, our residents should expect to receive equal protection under the law. I feel strongly that the ordinances we have on the books must be enforced equally for all residents. And I've seen instances where some residents appear or expect to follow a different set of rules, and that simply goes against the character of our city. We must all follow the same rules. I also believe that the laws should be in support of and directed by the specific needs of our community, and that the public should be engaged to collaborate with city government to change the laws so that they're always in step with the times and best meet the needs of today's residents. In summary, we must do a better job of working with the community to ensure our ordinances are up to date and then enforced with equal rigor across all residents.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Cousins, you have one minute closing statement.
Thank you, sir. In these difficult and tumultuous times, the citizens of Sylvan Lake deserve leaders who are focused on finding solutions to our most challenging problems in seamless partnership with the community they represent. I've worked in my community to build that partnership, serving the best interest of my neighbors and our community. I have heard the voice of every neighbor and worked to offer only the most well-researched and informed opinions so that I might help shape our future in the most respectful and responsible manner. As city councilman, you can expect that tradition to continue as I work to support residents, young and old alike, with the best interest of our community at heart and with the hope that future generations of my family may continue to call Sylvan Lake their home. I ask for your vote on November the 3rd. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be James L. Calper. Good evening, Mr. Calper.
I've made some notes here, so you'll see me glance down. Number one, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. Very helpful for our city. Hello, Sylvan Lake residents. My name is James Calper. I've lived in the city 34 years. My family's lived here over 70 years, moved in in 1950. My daughter just bought a house on Woodlands, so she'll be a fourth-generation Sylvan Lake resident. I'm also a life-size member of the Oakland County Boat Club. I've been very active in the SPAR resident group. I regularly attend city council meetings and planning commission meetings, and we're very committed to the city. As a little bit of background, I spent some time with John Martin, our city manager, and Chief Bassett, our new chief of police, some time with former mayors Pete Peters, Stuart Bandeline, and city council members Rick Erickson. And I've talked to the current council members Mike Subricki and Joe Solemi and Ben Clark. So I'm really interested in knowing what the people in the city and the residents are looking for and what their concerns might be. That's of great interest to me. Thank you.
The first question, what do you perceive the responsibility of the city council in relation to the decisions and recommendations of the Planning Commission and the ZBA?
Thank you, Jerry. The city council is very simple. The city council's job is to review recommendations from the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals and ultimately make the decision. As a rule in the charter, the Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning Commission members are appointed by city council. They're not elected by the residents. So ultimately, the decisions reside with city council, and it's very important as to who the five city council members are because all these decisions and recommendations from Planning Commission or ZBA ultimately reside with city council members. Thanks.
Thank you. What are your comments regarding police services and the management of the budget to support those services?
Like I said, I did personally spend some time with our new chief, Brian Bassett. Wonderful guy, great energy, wonderful police career in the city of Southfield. He was actually deputy chief before he retired to join us. The city of Sylvan Lake's police department is almost one-half, approaching close to $1 million of our $2 million city budget, so it's obviously very important. It's critical to the safety of our city, safety of our senior residents. Chief Bassett looks to be a wonderful asset to our city. And I asked him point-blank, you know, what changes are you looking to make? And he said, "Well, I've been here three weeks, so I need to do a little observation." A couple of things we talked about: traffic congestion, speeding, traffic safety. He's aware of those concerns in our city. We talked a little bit about maybe having another or more full-time police officers and maybe a little less of volunteer police officers, but that's all subject to the budget. The budget is created by the city manager in the future with the chief's input. It really wasn't. He was too new this year. And then that's approved by city council, and it's ultimately city council's job to approve the budget and work with the city manager and the chief of police to execute our public safety. Thank you.
Besides the current pandemic, why do you think there are so many commercial vacancies along Orchard Lake Road?
I've spent some time with some of the business owners on Orchard Lake Road, and I asked them exactly that question. And their responses were, you know, the traffic is very heavy, and without a left-turn lane, it makes it very difficult for cars to get in and out of the businesses. Interestingly, the businesses between Telegraph Road and Middle Belt Road on Orchard Lake Road have struggled greatly for 20 years. The businesses from Middle Belt Road around the curve toward Kegel Harbor and Ward's Point have had much greater success. The Telegraph to Middle Belt side, the lots are smaller, there's less parking. Many of the business owners told me that the DTE property is a great detriment with all of its 24/7 traffic, trucks in and out. It's not desirable to be on that part of Orchard Lake, and we've seen that struggle for all these years. So our master plan really needs to help us identify what those opportunities on Orchard Lake Road, especially that corridor between Telegraph and Middle Belt. Thank you.
Thank you. The fourth question, what are your feelings about strict enforcement of existing ordinances, specifically trucks, trailers, and equipment stored on private property? Now, when I got this question, it wasn't completely explained to me, so I don't know if the ASPER is referring to private or did they also mean residential?
Right, and I'll make the assumption that it's residential. So currently, we have laws and ordinances, you know, in the city, and I'm supportive of the laws that we have. However, we do have a process on how to make suggestions and go through reviewing a law and ordinance to have it amended or changed. So we do have that mechanism in the city. We do have rules that boats, certain types of trailers, certain types of vehicles can be stored inside yards and rear setbacks, et cetera, in the city. I'm going to make the leap that this is what the question is regarding. We need to enforce all our laws and ordinances equally and fairly. I would venture to guess that if we looked at changing some of these ordinances to allow perhaps less of these trucks or vehicles or trailers or whatever they are parked in the city, our city might look a bit more tidy. So I support the ordinances that exist. We need to enforce them, but we do have a mechanism to have discussions to change them, and I would be very supportive of that as a councilperson. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, sir, you have one minute for your closing statement.
Thank you, and I made some notes here, so you'll see me look at them. Number one, I really appreciate the opportunity. I really have a very simple agenda. I really want to listen to and represent the voters of the city of Detroit, I'm sorry, city of Sylvan Lake. And I think it's time that maybe we need some changes in the city. I've lived here 34 years. I've been asked to run for council many other times, and I never really felt it was the right time. Perhaps this is now the time. We have a lot of things going on in the city. We have a millage on the November ballot, which is critical to our future. That's going to address our roads and our water and our sewer, and those are going to be ongoing, year-over-year projects that are huge, huge for a small city like us. We have ongoing budget challenges. The budget will always be a challenge. Like I said, our budget's just a little bit short of $2 million annually, which is not a lot of money. We have a new chief of police, which is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity, but there'll be some learning and some growing, and he may look at some budget items that he'd like to spend money differently or in addition to. The Whitfield School property development, as we go forward, will continue to be interesting, and we need to make sure that we're doing the right things for the city, for property values, for the developers, well, the person who owns the property. That's fair. On the Orchard Lake Business Corridor, the same thing. Big challenge. It's been a struggle for decades, so it's not going to be an easy fix to address that. But again, the Whitfield property and the Orchard Lake corridor will be really critical to the master plan that we're currently working on, and how does that help us with our very unique city and be successful? Our U.S. economy is a challenge, and of course, that affects everything that happens inside our small, little city and funding Oakland County, funding from the state, funding from the feds.
Thank you.
And lastly, I'd like to be a voice for the residents, and a vote for Jim Calper will be that voice for the residents. I really appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Our next candidate is Luke Cassar. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Jerry.
One-minute opening statement. It's your turn for one-minute opening statement.
Burton, you're truly weak. Okay. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum and also the public for viewing the session. My father and uncle first settled here in the city in Sylvan Lake in 1944. My dad, a widower twice in the early '30s and again in the '50s, married a third time, raising 19 children, early on losing three small children. My uncle and aunt raising 12 children, both spending summers in Sylvan Lake. In 1984, I purchased my first home. In 1996, my family decided to rebuild, raising four children here in the city where I reside today. At the early age of nine, my dad, along with my older brothers, taught me the business of property management, along with teaching me the skills of mechanical and maintenance from the ground up. Currently, our family has seven members owning homes and living in the city of Sylvan Lake. In addition, we have invested in two additional leased homes, keeping the original home for family to use, as well as one commercial property on Orchard Lake. As a council member, I've always explained and discussed how and why votes casted was in the best interest of the city and its residents.
Thank you. And our first question with one-minute response, what do you perceive is the responsibility of the city council in relation to the discussions and recommendations of the Planning Commission and the ZBA?
Each of the committees plays a very specific and important role in government, such as drafting of ordinances, site plan reviews and approvals, as well as having to take into account appeals of proposed construction designs and variances, just to name a few. By city charter, from time to time, there may be a case where city council may elect and vote to supervenient another committee's decision. There's also the duty of city council to act according to applicable laws, regardless of opinions on issues. There are also cases where city council must act alone. I can say, having been on city council, we at city council have always had an open ear to the wishes and concerns of the residents of the city on each and every issue. Past decisions by city council has always been guided by the city's charter, as well as considering city officials and administrators' advice, residents' concerns and opinions, and most importantly, the advice of our city legal advisors. This has been my experience while on city council.
What are your comments regarding police services and the management of the budget to support those services?
In the last two years while being on city council, we have worked closely with the city manager in ways to entice prospective full-time police officers and coming on board to our city. In the past, we've had several good, hard-working, part-time officers, but after receiving on-the-job training and experiencing the experience of working on the street, although they may enjoy working within the city, there comes a time where they rightfully move on for better pay and benefits. We now have a solid count of four full-time officers, and I'm excited to say a full-time police chief. While my time on city council, we have worked closely with the city manager, making significant changes to pay benefit as well as pensions, responsibly keeping the city's police budget in line, along with enticing officers to come on board. As of recent, a small number of our nation's cities are experiencing its governmental officials' lack of leadership and failure to support their police, as well as other first responders. This is pure malice and true failure on their part. Failing to protect their citizens is unacceptable. Our police and first responders will always have my support. I strongly believe we should be grateful we have fellow Americans who are working and willing and making sacrifices in protecting others.
Besides the current pandemic, why do you think there are so many commercial vacancies along Orchard Lake Road?
This issue goes as far back as 2004. Our Orchard Lake corridor is not alone when it comes to available property police. In visiting other surrounding communities, you will find the same. It wasn't until 2016 did we begin to see improvements. I can speak specifically to this due to the fact that our family business is directly related to owning, operating, and leasing, including one here on Orchard Lake Road within the city of Sylvan Lake. We ourselves were experiencing a rise in leasing until COVID struck. The city consists of approximately one mile on Orchard Lake Road. Some properties experience certain difficulties in attracting prospective tenants, such as restricted parking, a result of when the road was widened years ago. Another is a difficulty with ingress and egress, a result due to the heavy traffic flow on Orchard Lake Road. For the most part, a fair amount of the properties have had improvements in the last few years.
Thank you. And the fourth question, what are your feelings about strict enforcement of existing ordinances, specifically trucks, trailers, and equipment stored on private property? Now, I didn't understand how the lady asked this question, whether she was referring to private or residential communities. So that is my remark. I don't know whether she wants private or residential.
Okay. Vehicles and equipment can or cannot be stored or parked in residential property as defined in the ordinances, and the city has done well enforcing them. What can and cannot be stored or parked in residential property are defined in the ordinances. With that said, one person's idea of what and what is not considered a truck, trailer, and equipment may vary from its true category and may not apply to an ordinance. In many cases, so long as units are being used and not simply parked or stored, may not apply to such ordinances. This question may very well have been asked for instances such as myself. On occasions, I have had equipment at my home, using them to making improvements and repairs on all four sides of my house. Or a typical ladder is not feasible, and setting up large scaffolding that would be in place for weeks would not only be unsightly, but labor-intensive. At times, I've used equipment for assisting neighbors or even the city with small chores. So if by chance her cat decides that she's going to run up a tree and you can't seem to be able to make it and it's not able to make its way down, let me know. I'll be glad to bring the man leftover and help you get the kitty out of the tree.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Kaser, you have one minute for your closing remarks.
Most common question is, why would you want to be on council? For many years, I often attended city council meetings, taking an interest in different topics and subjects. Like many others, I voiced my opinions, objections, disapproval of decisions, councils, of council's votes. Wanting to be part of a decision-making, I ran for and was elected. I did not originally run wanting to tackle single agenda item or because I was upset with a specific decision made by city council. I wanted to simply be involved in all aspects of the city's business. Another driving force was back in 2012, my two sons made the decision to serve this country by doing their part in the U.S. military. The boys, now men, doing so made me think, what have I ever done to give back to this city? I know there is no comparing the U.S. forces to a city council seat. Still, it drove me to run for city council. Being here for 61 years and raising poor children in the city, I decided to do so. Being on city council has opened my eyes to how and why city council comes to making the votes they do. Listening to residents' concerns plays a huge role. However, city council must consider all options, opinions, and advice from the city manager, officials, and legal advisors as well. I am here to ask the voters of Sylvan Lake to allow me to continue to serve on their behalf for one additional term for city council, and with that, I thank you all.
Will be Philip Ross, one-minute opening statement, Mr. Ross.
Yes, hi. I'm a recent resident of Sylvan Lake, only been there for three years. In this community, that's a short period. And I've recently been diagnosed with kidney disease, and I've been searching for a donor, and a lot of people raised their hand, and it really made me think about how people are just willing to give themselves. So I thought this would be a good way to give back to the community, to participate in the local government and make sure the city remains as beautiful as it is.
Mr. Ross, the first question will be, what do you perceive is the responsibility of the city council in relation to decisions and recommendations of the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes, I believe that the council's position... Excuse me, start over. I believe the council's job is to either approve or disapprove of the Planning Commission's input, and then after listening to input from the residents, decide whether to go forward or to send it back to the council.
Thank you. The second question, what are your comments regarding police services and the management of the budget to support those services?
Well, I support the police department completely, and it should be funded fully, providing it makes sense and produces positive results in the community. We have an excellent police force here. It's nice that we're a small community and that we have our own police force. I think it gives people a lot of comfort, and I think that needs to remain as such.
In the fourth question, what are your feelings about strict enforcement of existing ordinances, specifically trucks, trailers and equipment stored on private property?
I believe ordinances are there for a reason, and they should be followed. However, I do believe that there could be some leeway in some cases. There may be some temporary reason why something is the way it is, and this shouldn't necessarily be given a violation on it. You need to speak to the people and understand what is the reason for the problem and how can it be remedied without having to write a citation. If they fail to remedy the situation, then I think the enforcement has to be strict.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Ross, because you didn't use all your time, I will give you a minute and a half for your closing statement and any other remarks you would like to make in regards to the unit.
Well, like I said at the beginning, I'm relatively new to the town, to the city, and I love it. It feels like I've lived here all my life, even though it's only been three years. I can't believe it. And it's just a wonderful place to live, and I want to make sure it stays that way. You know, they're talking about developing a walkable downtown area along Orchard Lake Road. I'm very keen on that. Right now, I don't think we put our best face forward on Orchard Lake Road, and I think that needs to be improved, but it has to make sure it needs to feed... Excuse me. It must feed the needs of both the businesses and the residents, residents being the most important thing. And we have a beautiful lakefront and lake, and that needs to be maintained or whatever. There's a... I know there's a problem with geese, and I've got some ideas about how we could control that. The streets need some attention, and I'm a newcomer when it comes to the politics of the city, but I think the city needs some fresh blood, and I would like you to vote for me. Thank you.
First of all, thank you, League of Women Voters, for sponsoring this event. Hi, I'm Sally Siegel. I have been a resident of Sylvan Lake for three years, residing with my husband David and our two cats Archie and Quincy. I obtained my bachelor's in nursing from Oakland University and my master's in nursing from Wayne State University. I am a nurse practitioner with a certification in geriatrics. My priorities, if elected to city council, are to maintain open and transparent communication between the city residents and the council. We will also need to address our aging infrastructure in the near future, with our biggest challenge being working within our regulatory guidelines. I think it is essential to maintain, as well as improve, the quality of life amenities, such as our parks, our green spaces and our lake water quality, because these are the things that make Sylvan Place the place everyone wants to live.
The first question, what do you perceive the responsibility of the city council in relation to the decisions and recommendations of the Planning Commission and the ZBA?
I think the council looks into the city's goals, major projects and infrastructure improvements, ranging from community growth to land use to finances and strategic planning. The master plan is typically our driving document. The role of this Planning Commission is to make recommendations to the city council on matters dealing with present and future development of the city. I think the challenge comes in when the decisions of the Planning Commission are at odds with community wishes. The city council can either accept the recommendation, they can modify it, or they can decline it. The ZBA's job is to interpret a zoning ordinance and to grant variances. As a wise person once said, "Do your very best to represent your constituents, only after you have seen to the needs of the city as a whole."
What are your comments regarding police services and the management of the budget to support those services?
Well, I think the citizens of Sylvan Lake have indicated through their continued support and expansion of police services that it is very important to them by supporting all of the millage proposals that have been set forth for this. So we do spend approximately fifty percent of our budget on police services. However, I support the people in their effort to provide a safe and secure community.
Besides the current pandemic, why do you think there are so many commercial vacancies along Orchard Lake Road?
Well, I think there are a number of issues as to why there are so many vacancies. The Orchard Lake corridor is a confluence of four different cities: Sylvan Lake, Keighley Harbor, Bloomfield Hills and West Bloomfield. Prior to the pandemic, rush hour was heavily trafficked, and making a left turn anywhere along the Orchard Lake corridor was extremely difficult. Many of the buildings, though, east of Middlebelt have peeling paint. They have poorly maintained asphalt, and some, though occupied, are very poorly kept. Others that are west of Middlebelt, though tidy, are boring and uninspiring. However, there are some buildings that do a standout job and by just having a creative paint job or the addition of shutters or awnings. So I think there are certainly less expensive cosmetic fixes that could add to the attractiveness of the area, thus encouraging new businesses, things as basic as a fresh coat of paint or a mural depicting Sylvan Lake. We certainly have plenty of talent in Sylvan Lake. We could sponsor contests for the best mural, banners and decorative lighting in parking lots, and we certainly could use more greenery in front of the properties. Look at the draw that the lighting, just the lighting of the buildings in Rochester during the Christmas area brings to the area, as well as additional revenue for the surrounding businesses. These are inexpensive fixes that could be done in the short term as a long-range plan is being developed. The recommendation of a planning summit that was put forth by SPAR includes businesses, property owners, developers, as well as city planners. And they could put forth new ideas and new energies and contribute to a coordinated revitalization of the whole Orchard Lake corridor. In the long term, if we are serious about making this into a walkable community, the most walkable area is our trail. The first step is already there with our farm-to-table restaurant, Sylvan Table. Creative signage along the trail would direct you to the restaurant, where you could stop and get a beverage, dinner or snack. And depending on what gets built on the Whitfield property, you could create a shopping destination or an open-air market or an area for pop-up shops, similar to what has been done in Detroit. These could be places where people could go and play before or after dinner. Or alternatively, we could maintain the Whitfield property as a recreation area for the community, using foundation monies to purchase and maintain the land. Once you have a destination site, you will draw others to the area.
What are your feelings about the strict enforcement of existing ordinances, specifically trucks, trailers and equipment stored on private property?
I think we're... Talking primarily about residential properties, I think ordinances need to be clear and consistently enforced. Having said that, I feel that trailers and heavy equipment should be stored out of sight or inside yards or backyards. We are a very small city, and there's a reason we're known as being the prettiest little city in Michigan. The pride the people take in their homes is obvious. We all need to maintain our property. In the early spring and summer, I feel like I'm walking through a Pinterest catalog. It is so pretty around here. So I think it is important to consistently enforce ordinances regarding commercial trucks, trailers and equipment.
Any other remarks you would like to make in regards to the unit?
I want to thank everyone for listening. My goal as a member of city council is to increase the transparency and be an advocate for the people of Sylvan Lake, all of the people. It is a responsibility of our elected officials to represent the values of the citizens in the city in which they live. As a nurse and a nurse practitioner, I have advocated for patients and their families for over thirty years. I would like to be an advocate for the people of Sylvan Lake by serving on city council.
Our next candidate will be Aaron Lorenz. Mr. Lorenz, one-minute opening statement.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for producing the virtual candidates forum. I have served on city council since two thousand and four. My goal then, as it has been every year since then, is continuous improvement in Sylvan Lake's infrastructure and maintaining our environment. During these sixteen years, thanks to you, the voters of Sylvan Lake, we have accomplished many great things. During my first term, we built the community center, thanks to your supporting the community center millage. During the current term, we completed a stormwater and wastewater management plan using grant funding. We also created an asset management plan for our water and sewer systems, including other infrastructure needs. It is for this reason that I am first asking you to support the infrastructure millage that will begin in two thousand and twenty-two, when the current bond for water and sewer drops off of our tax rules. The impact to your tax bill for this millage should be absolutely invisible, since all we're doing is replacing the bond millage with the infrastructure millage.
The first question, what do you perceive the responsibility of the city council in relation to the decisions and recommendations of the Planning Commission and the ZBA?
When I was first elected in two thousand and four, city council acted as the zoning board of appeals. Due to many factors, we created a separate board to hear these appeals. I want to thank the board members, our city manager, city attorney, and the city planners for their due diligence that they undertake making these difficult decisions and coming up with an answer on whether the variance should be given or not given. I fully support the decisions that this board makes, and to be clear, they make decisions, not recommendations. From time to time, property owners make a legal challenge of the denial of their variance request. When this happens, city council, with advisement from our city attorney, our city manager and city planner may choose to settle the dispute via consent agreement. During this, this consent agreement is typically a compromise of what was originally asked for that satisfies both parties and prevents long-drawn-out legal battles that might affect our city's budget and the insurance for legal services. It is clear the challenge to... If it is clear that there is a challenge to the ZBA decision that is unwarranted, I will stand behind the ZBA's decision one hundred percent. Regarding Planning Commission, which I have served on in the past and present, I believe it is city's council's responsibility to listen to their recommendations. Planning Commission makes recommendations to city council on ordinances and zoning changes. They also make decisions regarding site plans. I believe city council needs to fully evaluate Planning Commission's recommendations. We listened to them and the voters when Gateway Ventures requested the Whitfield property be rezoned from CS to C2. Planning Commission's unanimous recommendation to rezone to C2 was the main reason city council unanimously voted yes to rezone the property to C2.
What are your comments regarding police services and the management of the budget to support those services?
The police budget is approximately seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We recently hired Chief Bassett to manage the police department. Before his hiring, our city manager, John Martin, took on the position of city manager and police chief, saving the city more than seven hundred thousand dollars over seven years. Unfortunately, this could not go on forever, so we needed to hire a police chief. With the urging of city council, John Martin vetted numerous candidates to fill the police chief position. One of my desires was that he find an individual that might be able to fill both roles, city manager and police chief, in the future. I believe Chief Bassett has the background and tools to fulfill this role. His twenty years of law enforcement plus ten years of executive level experience and a master's degree in public administration made him an excellent choice to fill the position of chief and potentially city manager. Maintaining the police department for a small city is a big commitment. Over the past sixteen years, we have evaluated cost-saving ideas such as outsourcing the department to the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, West Bloomfield, Bloomfield Township, and we also explored a joint operating agreement with Keighley Harbor. Although I'm always willing to explore the options for police services, I am a proponent of Sylvan Lake maintaining their own police department. I also thank the citizens of Sylvan Lake for supporting the luxury of us having the funding for our own police department.
Besides the current pandemic, why do you think there are so many commercial vacancies along Orchard Lake Road?
Orchard Lake Road is bordered by Bloomfield Township, West Bloomfield and Keighley Harbor. Most people do not know where each begins and ends, including commercial real estate agents. We recently conducted a market study of the area. It was performed by the Gibbs Group and highlighted a number of very interesting items. Number one is the demographics of this area. We learned we have a lot of disposable income in around this area. I believe it is one of the reasons why the higher-end businesses on the corridor do well. And of course, we have to give the owners of these businesses credit because they do such an excellent job of running their businesses. I think it is one of the things that we have to look at is what the landlords and the business owners are doing in this area. If we look at McDonald's and Taco Bell, they seem to be thriving. What's unique about them? They reinvested in their infrastructure, and they're willing to pay their employees to come to work. We have other owners in the area that haven't updated their property. One that I spoke to, or one of their representatives that I spoke to recently pretty much said, "We have eighty million dollars in the bank. When somebody wants to lease the building, we'll improve it." So I think we have a very difficult challenge on our hand. We're reviewing the master plan right now. We're going to be reaching out to our neighboring communities to see how we can work together to promote the Orchard Lake corridor and, you know, bring and show business owners it's viable for not only standard businesses, but high-end businesses.
What are your feelings about the strict enforcement of existing ordinances, specifically trucks, trailers and equipment stored on private property?
Ordinance enforcement in the city is always a difficult task. People like to believe that if somebody's grass is too long or somebody has a trailer parked somewhere where it shouldn't be, all that's required is our ordinance officer or a police officer needs to do is walk up and ask him to perform the task that other neighbors would like to have happen. Currently, we have four time, full-time officers. We have two part-time officers, and then we have a separate ordinance officer that is working two days a week. And we're going to try to bring them on to three days a week. Every complaint that we receive, our ordinance officer responds to. They look into the situation, and they will either address that situation if it needs to be addressed because an ordinance isn't being met, or, you know, will... He'll ask the people politely to try to get the situation fixed. Ordinance enforcement is a long, drawn-out process. Many times, it can take sixty days and more before you'll see any action on asking somebody to cut their grass. Also, another thing that makes it difficult is one person's wildflower garden is another person's weed garden. So I am for sure fully in favor of enforcing ordinances. I think it's just very difficult when you're not on the inside looking at what's going on to understand how difficult it is to get action taken in some of these situations, and how just because I don't like what you've done, it might not be actually against the ordinances or the codes to start with. I want to thank again the League of Women's Voters and your time for taking time to watch this production. Again, I want to ask you to, number one, vote yes for the millage question, the infrastructure millage question. This is most important for the future of our city. It's also one of the major reasons why I chose It's also one of the major reasons why I chose to run one more term, because I want to make sure that we get this infrastructure millage passed, so that we maintain our city into the future. So please, vote for the millage question, and of course, I want to thank you all for supporting me over these last 16 years, and I'm asking you to, one more time, support me for city council. Thank you very much.
Also on the ballot is a charter amendment. I shall read the charter amendment as it's written on the ballot. Shall the charter be amended to add a new section, 13.5(c), establishing a single new additional millage of 3.0 mills for infrastructure maintenance and improvements of the city's water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and street, including roads and sidewalk systems, commencing July 1, 2023, and effective through and including July 1, 2037? It is estimated that if this is levied, 3.0 mills would raise approximately $315,000 when first levied in 2023. The city's other charter authority to levy taxes would be unaffected. This would require a yes or no vote. This concludes our forum. The League of Women Voters Oakland Area, an organization that does not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Would like to thank the candidates, city clerk Denise Striden and her staff for their participation. This program will be broadcast several times before the election on the city's website, and also on the League's website, www.my.lwv.org/michigan/Oakland-area. For further information on the candidates, see the voter guide at the League's website, and also on Vote 411. Don't forget to vote November 3, 2020. Thank you and good night.